Welcome, everybody, to our regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 20, 2013. It is 6:01 PM. I call this meeting to order. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
(inaudible)
Sandy, would you read the open meeting statement, please?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Shambow.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. You have the consent agenda. It is in your packet. There are no new items to add to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council members or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where we would vote on those as individual items? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Shambow, second by Olson, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under the regular agenda, there is no new items that were handed out tonight, so what you see is what we have for the regular agenda. Unless any council members would like to see any changes to that, we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Fenske, second by Lockwood, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under number six, non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation of a certificate for Jan Rodamacher for her 15 years of service to the city. She works in the library. She's not here tonight, but Peg?
She just wanted to say thank you for the recognition. She's unable to be here this evening.
Okay. We'll get you the certificate, and would you get that to her? Thank you. And also, we have a presentation of a certificate to Scott Mina for his 10 years of service to the city, and he works in the Public Works Department. We do have a certificate for him also. John, if you wouldn't mind getting that to him. All right, and then we have a presentation by Pete Anderson, our fixed-based operator for the Wapaka Municipal Airport Brunner Field Annual Operations Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that went real quick, and now I can use more time. I was like, no. No. I want to start out, just to let you know, this year was kind of a unique year for us at the airport. We had a couple that has an aircraft out by the airport, and they're walking down the EIA grounds, and they're wearing a Wapaka shirt on their backs. People actually stopped them and asked, "Are you from the Wapaka Airport?" And they said, "Yeah." And people say, "We've been hearing a lot about that airport." Friends of ours are starting to stay up there during the EIA event and had conversations with them. I thought that was pretty neat that actually we're getting stopped now and recognized just by wearing a shirt on someplace as big as the EIA grounds. Actually, my daughter and I were there for about a half a day talking to some manufacturers, and as I was walking down through the grounds, I got stopped by performers, stunt performers or aerobatic performers, and actually asked if I was Pete from the Wapaka Airport. And I said, "Yeah." And they proceeded to tell me that they appreciate what Wapaka has been doing with the EIA as far as aerobatic box and being very proactive with the EIA. And just wanted to say that they've been up by us, flying our box, and that they really love the area. So I have to say, I was like a proud father walking around there, kind of puffed up in the chest, because that's exactly what we've been looking for for the last five years, that we've been operating the airport out there. The Air Venture Cup race went on again this year, and we were the final destination. If you remember, last year it was by default that we got it. The airports that they were going to go to got weathered in, and they called me at about 6:00 in the morning, and by 8:00, we had the airport set up to receive all the racers. When they came in, they found the facility so nice, they made that their final destination, hopefully, from now on. And this year was, they came back to us. It was 60 racers that came in. It was fantastic showing with that. They went from Mount Vernon, Illinois. A friend of mine who runs that airport had a great time down there with this group, and they came into Wapaka. And if you go online and you look up like Sport Aircraft Racing Association or Air Venture Cup, it's really neat to see, because in a lot of publications that go worldwide, there's quite a few mentions of the Wapaka Airport. And I just love seeing that again, too. It's Wapaka, 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 and how beautiful it is, and it's stuff that we've been really thriving to get out there. Cherokee's Oshkosh were in again. This is their fourth year. This year, they had 29 aircraft, and they were actually delayed a day to get down to Oshkosh. They stayed Saturday. And the majority of the people, the first time, the first year they're here, they complained because of the fact that they got weathered in and they couldn't get down to Oshkosh right away. Now they're happy that they got to stay another day. And I've actually found that the majority of these aircraft that come in for the Cherokee's Oshkosh stay the full week with us here in Wapaka. They fly to Oshkosh on the Saturday before, and most all of them leave the Sunday before the show even starts. So it's gotten to the point that it's a little family that comes in here, and it's between 60 to 75 people, taking up our hotel rooms, using our restaurants, and really call Wapaka home, which has really been going. It's another thing that we're just very proud of out there, that we've developed this type of friendship and this type of people from all over the nation that do call Wapaka their home away from home. The photo shoot was out by us again. We're very proud that that's been going on. This is the fourth year that the EIA has chose Wapaka as a backdrop for all their photo shoots with the airplanes. These are the best of the best. These are ones that go on all their calendars, all their big headlines, all their big front-page magazines. It's pictures of the Wapaka, on the Wapaka Airport and/or our lakes around this area. It's all photo above ground and on ground right here. And I would have to say, I believe, I don't have the numbers, but I do believe that this is actually broke all past records of the number of aircraft we've had out for photo shoot. They started as early as like 2:00 in the afternoon, and I'd be out there at 8:00, and they were still doing photo shoots. So it went on just continually every day. It was just fantastic time. One thing nice about this is you get these people in there, literally from all over the world, and they got introduced to the Wapaka area also. And they just say how beautiful the airport is and how great the grounds are, and when they're up there getting their shots done with the photo plane and stuff, and they're looking around, they come back and they're in awe. So it's something that I think all of us can really be proud of, of our area, because it's really, really being noticed by a lot of people, how beautiful it really is. This year brought in a number of transit, aircraft transit, or people that don't board at the airport or live out at the airport, it's people that come in from all over the United States or even from this state. Most people that came in were getting fuel. I would always go out and try to catch each and every one and make a point of either myself or my daughter or one of my employees that's out there would talk to the people and give them little tidbits of, you know, where you can go here and what we have, and point out our hotels. And a lot of people didn't realize that we have all this stuff so close to the airport that they can come here. And some actually went down to Oshkosh and canceled reservations that they had and came back up here and stayed, because they drove around and liked it so much. So again, it's a proud thing. During our, what we call our special flights, they went very successful this year. I hate to say that press during the special flights was really lax, and that's due to the FAA. The special flights was Jetman and also the Terrafuga Flying Car. Because these aircraft or this person and this aircraft hadn't flown before, they had to go through what they call an acceptance flight by the FAA. And it's the FAA laws or rules that you can't have any press on the grounds, and you can't have public inside fence. So if you had an aircraft or something at the airport, you could be in working on your aircraft or doing your normal thing, but we couldn't make it public to let the people come out and see this because of those acceptance flights. Somehow, which I have no idea that I'd ever confess to, but we did leak out enough information that we probably had 100 people around watching that type of thing, and it was really interesting. It was a lot of fun. Each part of this report kind of shows where the airport's going and where it's coming from. My thoughts from the day I started was to get my infrastructure set, make this airport something you can be proud of, which I have been from the day one. And it's now supporting and showing off our community and such a positive right that I can think, I think now as we grow, that we're going to see a tremendous growth out there as far as this type of traffic. We've already seen a large number of commercial, not commercial, excuse me, charter flights and/or business flights that come in to maintain and keep our businesses going within the Wapaka area or Wapaka County area. A lot of these CEOs that I talked to, and they come in, have even told me that they may have moved some of these businesses if they didn't have access to them as readily available as what they have right through our airport. So it's giving a lot of community support, and it is growing. I have about five new corporates that come in on a constant basis now, and that's not counting Foundry. You know, and these are people that have from Illinois, Indiana, Minnesota, and Michigan that are coming in. So we're supporting a lot of our community and our businesses. For the numbers, just to let you know, for EIA, we sold just under 8,000 gallons of fuel in about a week and a half, which is a considerable amount of fuel. We rented out through Enterprise approximately 30 cars. We had 646 passengers come through our gates. 930 operations, flight operations took place within that about two-week period. We had five jets that came in. We had 362 piston aircraft. Out of that, only 56 were based aircraft. The rest were 312 transit aircraft. So these are people coming to Wapaka to either stay here and/or to get fuel and be introduced to our area. And then, of course, I had one flying car and a flying man, but I don't know how to count those. So, but that was really great. The flying man, by the way, has a six-foot wing that he straps to his back and has four jet engines underneath it, literally, aircraft. It's incredible. I got to know him quite well, and he's not a nut. First question I, first question I had to him is why, and he looked at me and said, "Why not?" You know, and this guy is actually really, I mean, I had to kind of sit back and ask who would strap a wing to their back and put four jet engines on it, but he's really into this to kind of demonstrate where people can go in the world of flight. For this year, we have projects that are happening out at the airport. Within the next few weeks, I hope, within a month for sure, we'll be repainting both runways under the state and BOA Bureau of Aeronautics project, and that will be no cost. That's a project that comes fully paid for by the Bureau of Aeronautics and the state of Wisconsin. This will re-stripe all our runways and get them back up to standards for instrument approaches for when the aircraft come in. We're going to have the third annual North Woods Race coming up in October, which will be October 5th. This one, we will be getting out, the last three or two years, rather, I get on WDX and I get the word out to have people stop out, and that's been growing. This year, because of the Air Venture Race, the majority of the people who were refueling and stayed, we actually got them lunch and everything a day when they came in, too. Excuse me. They said that they're thinking about coming back in to enter the North Woods Race, so that's going to mean more people in our hotels and into our restaurants. So it's starting to become a major event, and I think that this is something that's going to grow. Anybody that has an interest or a thought of, geez, I don't know about this racing stuff, our races aren't around a pylon. They take off and go to, go turn point over three different airports and back in. It's about 140-mile course. So it's not racing against each other or fast racing at low altitudes around pylons. It's a safe cross-country type of race, and it's against time. Then we get back, and usually Plane Guys, my company, will sponsor a cookout for everybody that comes in, and we sit around and do a bunch of hangar talk and have a great time, and they go home later in the night and/or stay overnight with us. I'd like to publicly thank Darryl Massman from out at the airport. Some of you know Darryl. Darryl was very, very helpful and influential in getting the airbox again this year and assisting with the airbossing of it. Without him, I couldn't have grown this project in the short period that we have grown it in. I'd also like to thank Ken Rogers. He actually donated his facility, the Red Door Hangar, that he just got done building and revamping. He donated that full building to our special flights and our performers, so they'd have an area that they could go to without having to be bothered by the public. Now, they all came over by the public and talked to them and showed them stuff and drove around in the car, you know, flying car and stuff like that, but they like to have their quiet spot as they're getting ready for their tests and other flights. So Ken was, kind of was great to let us use the Red Door Hangar. I'd also like to say the appreciation, like the Wapaka Fire Department and the Gold Cross Ambulance Service. I had to have come out because of the FAA acceptance flights that took place at Jetman. We had to have that presence on the ground, and they both accepted and were out there with no problems. I mean, it was just great. The guys volunteered their time, and they got out there and did their thing, and we did it right and safe. And not, last but not least, I'd like to also thank Chief Golk and his personnel. They were very good. They always have been. This year, they're exceptional. They made rounds out at the airport. They'd actually drive the grounds late at night to make sure that all our visitors' aircrafts were safe, and nobody's out there touching them or doing anything, even though we have security fences. It doesn't take much to fly over one of those and create some problems. His officers did make special stops out there to make sure that everybody's safe and stopped to talk to the people that were visiting, made sure to keep us up on all the weather that was changing. We had a couple days that got kind of iffy, and they were there to make sure that we knew what was coming in and that we were safe and the aircraft were secure. So I'd like, again, to thank Chief Golk and his personnel. So we're just, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Pete. Anybody have any questions or comments? Great. Great to know what's going on and moving forward there.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on, then. We have the public input part of our meeting. This is if we have anybody in the audience that would like to talk to us on a non-agenda item. If that's the case, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to give us some input on non-agenda items. If anyone wants to tell me where that scratching's coming from? Okay. All right, let's move on, then, to department announcements and reports, and let's start with Jean.
Projects and the budget's not really good so far this year.
Good. Thanks, Jean. Any questions, Jean? Next up, then, is Peg from the library.
Thank you, Mayor. We are in our adult summer library program, which is two more weeks of reading, and those are goals created by the people who are participating, so everybody makes their own goal for reading. We also started our exhibit Comic Ground, Native Cultures of Wisconsin. It's through September 21st, and it is quite the exhibit, lots of artifacts, lots of information. You want to make sure you have some time to really look and browse in the exhibit, because there's a lot to take in. We are celebrating 20 years on the square this year, and we are going to have a library open house on September 19th, and all of you are invited to attend from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the evening. Baby Gardens is still Tuesdays and Fridays, and if anybody needs help downloading their eBooks from the library website, I'm available, along with other staff members, if you have questions or need some assistance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments for Peg? If not, let's move on to Brennan.
All right, good evening. Excuse me. On the economic development side of things, the last couple weeks and months, I've been attending several different seminars or meetings throughout the community. Henry and I continue to go out into the community and speak with some of the businesses and the business owners, so we're doing that. Attending several meetings with East Central. I just got back, excuse me, from Madison last week on a seminar towards my IEDC certification. It was economic or strategic planning for economic development. We'll actually tie in very well to the organized meeting that Henry and I are working on for September 10th with the officials here and other municipalities coming in as well. Henry are also working on that agenda right now, getting some more information out to there. Working on the strategic plan and the overall, I guess, process or plan that we hope to implement and go through within the next, I'll say, six to 12 or 18 months. That will be unveiled at the September 10th meeting, and we'll follow up on subsequent council meetings as well to really look at and dive in that plan to make sure that council's okay with the process moving forward, not only on the strategic plan, the overall goals for the city, but also the more detailed plans as they'll go later on, more focusing on the revision of the master plan as well. Project updates, Midwest Air Supply, still on hold at the moment. I've reached out to the landowner. He is still working on the site plan. His ideas have changed again, so we are working through that with Mr. McKay right now. No new news on Verizon at this moment. They're still working with the county. I'll let John speak a little bit more on the East Gateway Sewer Extension, but that project is moving forward. Last, we got the Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission approved Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks Site Plan approval. Thought overall went very well, and the Plan Commission received it very well for the project as a whole. There are a couple things on the agenda this evening that are related to that project, but I believe the applicants are looking to start construction, hopefully in October, and open in March or April of 2014. So that will coincide with, I believe, our, the city's project for the East Gateway Sewer Extension as well, so we'll have sewer out there for him. No new status on the Fall Gator Mill at this time. That's probably more of a 2014 initiative with the applicant. Other initiatives, planning zoning, met with the Plan Commission last week and starting to get an idea of some of the revisions that we need to take a look at for the zoning code and the master plan. Those will be unveiled September 10th as well. Working with John right now, who's our building inspector slash code enforcement, to increase some of the code enforcement right now. Because the position was vacant for four years, Rhonda and John took, assumed some of my duties along with Henry and John, so being the second month in, starting to take some of those responsibilities back, which will allow John and our department a little bit more to focus on some of the code enforcement throughout the community. On the GIS side, we were authorized to upgrade the software that we have currently in-house. We are working on an initiative to try to get more of that information that we have, not only collected but implemented into our base map, but also out into the public along the sewer and water departments, along with the planning and code enforcement for 2014. On a personal level, I'll let everyone know that I'm actually moving tomorrow, so I'll be a resident of the city as of tomorrow afternoon, so that's it.
Great. Thanks. Any comments, questions for Brennan? Thank you. John Idleberg, Public Works.
Hey, projects. State Street project, as you know, has been opened. We're processing the final pay request, and we'll be sending some assessment billing out for some of the water utility work that was done on the private utilities out there. And we did do sidewalk work for the gas company, which we'll be billing out as well. We've begun our wastewater digester cover project at the treatment plant, and we've got some issues we're dealing with there, kind of more technical in nature, but we're trying to work through those. And East Gate Sewer Project, I guess now we call Runway Drive East Gate Sewer Project, we have had surveyors out there from Omni, and they're starting design on it now, so I'll be in touch with them shortly on that. South Park Shelter Project, as you're aware, is now out for bid. The plans are out on the street. If you know of any contractors that are interested in reviewing the plans, we will have a set shortly at City Hall to be reviewed. They cannot leave City Hall. And the advertisement forbids at the city clerk's front desk is a description on where contractors can get plans. They can have them mailed to them with a deposit sent to MSA, or they can get electronic copies, or they can go to plan review companies, companies that have the plans that they can review and look at. So a lot of different options, and we encourage all the local builders and contractors to bid on that. We've sent out RFPs for the 2014 roadway work. We have not budgeted, we don't know what the budget will be at this point, because that'll be part of the 2014 capital planning, but we're proceeding with design work, so we can probably bid that out in February is where we're at. We have to get it surveyed before the snow falls, so that'll be in front of you, probably at December, September 17th council meeting, for an award of engineering design on that. Bowlby Lift Station, we're doing some improvements on, at the Bowlby Lift Station. This is one of our main lift stations behind the Goodwill complex there. Quick Trip pavement, as Henry will talk about, we've completed the sealing and striping out there, so that work finishes up, I believe, all of our landlord duties. And as you know, there's a tenant in there now. We did do some storm damage cleanup after the windstorm that we had. It was, we had probably a day's worth of work. We had crews in at 1:30 that morning, starting to clear up some of the debris, so I appreciate their efforts in trying to get the roads passable for our morning traffic. We have a slag seal project upcoming. We're going to be slag sealing Joanne Lane, Harbor, Furman, and Cover Bridge Road. So this is the area would be west of Hanson Appliance and north of West Fulton. So Joanne Lane is by Pizza Hut. Cover Bridge Road is right next to Hanson's and goes up and around the back. We're going to be sealing that to, just about to the Wapaka River behind Taco Bell. And Harbor and Furman are the front of the roads. Movie Gallery is, and it used to be, is it Premier Bank now? It used to be Bay Lake Bank, Premier Bank, and a few others. So that will be in the next couple weeks, weather permitting. And that's what the pile of slag is doing, sitting in front of the old Bowlby by O'Reilly Auto. That's for that project, so. And lastly, Brennan talked a little bit about this, but we have been pursuing dead tree notices. John Lust has been going around identifying dead trees throughout the community. We're getting notices out to those property owners and asking, obviously, that they do take those down. And we have been working with those property owners as to when they do take those down, you know, now versus fall or early winter, but they obviously have to come down for safety reasons, you know. So I appreciate John's efforts on being diligent on that, and if you do know of a dead tree in the community that you can identify, get that address to John, and we'll get a notice out to the property owner, and we'll pursue that then. As of budgeting, as of July 31st, we're at 58% of the budget. All of our divisions were under that amount, with water at 48, street at 54, and sewer at 56. And our snow and ice budget is at 104%, just a reminder. Telling you now, so in November, December is going to go up.
All right, John. Thank you. Any questions, John?
I have one.
Go ahead.
John, do we have any updates on the Public Works facility? We had that other building we were going to look at. Where are our standards now?
We're in the process of reviewing that right now. I don't have anything. Hopefully, in the next couple weeks here, I'll have something, and soon as I get it, I can get that information out. But yeah, we're in the process of reviewing that and doing our due diligence on it and identifying what's needed there. Yep. Still active in it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to Parks and Rec Director, Aaron Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll start out with South Park update. Not much is new on the front since the last meeting here, other than bids are, we're in the bidding process, and I would like to thank John and Roger Hanson especially for going through the construction documents and the utility documents with a fine-toothed comb, and they did a great job on that, so thank you. The bids are due September 11th, so that's what we're looking at there. The school building next to us, the rec center there, that has started demolition this week, and that is looking to be done, the renovation inside is looking to be done in October. and that is looking to be done, the renovation inside is looking to be done in October. Registrations have started for pretty much all of our fall programs, as well as Fallarama and the children's parade. And there are library employees also helping with that. Patsy Servie and as well as Paula Reedy have really taken control on that children's parade portion and they've done a great job with that, so I'd like to thank them. Along with Fallarama, we do have, the children's parade is going to be run from 10 to 11 a.m. on the morning of September 21st. It's basically for any children's groups, such as sporting groups or dancing groups or arts groups, under the age of 12, or sunny day or anything like that. And we encourage them to kind of walk in the parade, they can have a banner for themselves, dress up, use it as promotion. And that's kind of what we're looking at there. Individuals are also able to partake in it. There will be creativity awards and such like that with judges along the route. That'll be from City Hall to South Park where Fallarama will take place. Fallarama is basically going to be arts and crafts vendors, we're going to have a farmer's market, Humane Society's going to have a bake sale, Jimmy Miller's going to do a pumpkin carving demo, we're going to have a petting zoo for the FFA, Fire Truck's going to be their music, concessions and beer sales and more. So that'll, kind of that event will be from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. So we're continuing to work on that. And again, that's September 21st. Would encourage anyone to come down and plan for that. We do have a new employee, contractual employee onboard at the rec center, Deborah Loom, her name is, and she is helping out with the recreation programming aspect of things and kind of providing some relief until we hire a recreation programmer full-time. She started last week, two days, and will continue three days. She'll be working Tuesday through Thursdays, 30 hours a week, she'll be working 10-hour days. She has experience in Las Vegas, couple towns in California, and Minneapolis, Minnesota in recreation positions. Not only is she kind of helping with relief, but she's also brought a lot of ideas from her past jobs and past communities and I think, I'm excited about what we've discussed in the last week and kind of the possibilities going forward, so I think it's, that's a great opportunity. She is, her contract is for, through November 30th and is at least committed for six weeks from when she started. We do have Joanne Rasmussen, one of our cleaning staff, is retiring. Her last day is Wednesday. She's done a, done a great job for us for years since I've been here, I believe it's been eight years that she started. So we are looking to fill that position in September and are working on that, and that is all I have.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, next then we have Police Chief.
Thanks, Mayor. We just began a background investigation on top two candidates to replace the latest officer, as I mentioned last time. Our person that we had lined up had took a position elsewhere, so we started the process again and now we're in the process of doing a background investigation. We do have three members of the Police and Fire Commission going to the Police and Fire Commission Workshop in the Wisconsin Dells on September 27th. The Commission further approved purchase of a used vehicle through Neville Motors to replace a 2006 Chevy Impala. And they also approved a preliminary draft budget for 2014, which has been submitted to Gene and we'll get the rest of the numbers and that'll come forward next month. Rest is informational.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. All right, then we have Henry, our City Administrator.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight on the report. We will begin our budget process on Tuesday, September 10th. I think talking with Gene, our idea is just sort of set the table for the upcoming budget. Not a long meeting, anticipate maybe about a half hour, and then we'll go into this economic development training. That'll be maybe about a couple hour session on what is economic development. We think that's a good kickoff as we begin working on developing the, you know, what we want to focus on in the economic development area. Also in my report, on December, or December 3rd, September 3rd, at your council meeting, the DOT will be present to give information on a project they're going to undertake next year in the fall. And that's the improvement of the intersection of Highway 54 and County QQ. They want to get your input, they want to address a very important question. The way the project's designed now, it's about an eight-week project, it's going to have a lot of lane closures, but that intersection will stay open. There's certainly a lot of pros and cons to doing that. There is another alternative of creating a detour route, which would shorten the project to three weeks. And there's a lot of pros and cons to that approach. So they just want to get your input. They will be sending a letter to businesses in that corridor, making them aware that this meeting, at this meeting on the 3rd, information will be put forth. And I believe they're going to invite the town chairs of Farmington, or officials from Farmington. I don't know that they'll expect a decision that day, but it's, you know, they're going to need to get going on finalizing all their documents and get that project ready for bidding. And again, it would be undertaken after Labor Day next, next year. And then finally, we had our 13th Annual Triathlon, and I'd like to personally thank a couple people in our city. Roger Hanson and Josh Peterson are two principal people in the Parks and Rec and Street Department that kind of oversaw that. Got a little help from Chief and the Police Department to put that on. Again, it's a great event for our community and our people do a lot to make that happen. And again, I think, I don't know that anybody got hurt this year. Usually we have maybe a few broken bones on the bike route and stuff, but I don't believe we had any injuries whatsoever, so that was really good. We did have one guy pull out of the swim because he was having heart pangs, which was smart. But other than that, it went off great and I want to thank our city crews for all their efforts. That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Henry. Okay, let's move on to action items then. We have license report number 1184. This is a special Class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages at the Opaquah VFW Post 1037 for the National Guard Family Picnic on September 7th, 2013. I don't think everybody's in attendance tonight, although this is an event that they have been doing for a number of years. And I, as far as I know, there aren't any changes to it. Chief, have you had an opportunity to?
I guess I didn't realize it was a picnic. I didn't see anything on the description of promise that they wanted to be outside. Is it all inside?
Well, if it is as it passed, it's been inside, so we should clarify that to make sure, because it's always been just inside before. You're right. Let's make sure of that.
Do you want to make that a contingent upon your vote for it?
Are you okay with that, council? As long as we know that? Okay. All right, anything else on that? We would need a motion?
I'm wondering about that waiver request, is that all right?
That's, yeah, that's fairly typical, they just need to make their request. They don't have anyone under 21 in there without a parent. That's common.
I make a motion, we approve license report number 1184 for special B, Class B temporary license, sell form, fermented malt. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve of this license report number 1184. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, next we have the vertical phone system software upgrade and Josh is going to, Josh Warner is going to present this to us.
Okay, a little bit of history about our phone system. It was installed, I believe, 2008. Based off the investment the city made, the condition of the system right now, I think we've got at least another good five years to get out of it, to get a good return on our investment in that. And the software that runs the system is fairly out of date, it's the original software from when it was installed. And the city at that point elected not to go with any sort of plan to keep that up to date. And we're starting to run into some compatibility issues with the software. There's two portions of it. There's the server software that actually runs the phone system, and there's client software that our staff uses on their computers to manage voicemails, call logs, and other aspects of their phone. And the client software is pretty out of date, it will not run on 64-bit editions of Windows and it's been quite limiting in computer upgrades and software upgrades. 64-bit versions of Windows allow you to run more than three and a half gigs of RAM on a computer, more efficient use of the computer processor. And that's going to be getting in the way on future computer upgrades. And considering you get handful more years of life out of this system to get a good return on it, that's going to be limiting over the next few years. I know the Police Department relies heavily on that software. City Hall, there's some staff that uses it quite a bit. In addition, the, this upgrade would bring more features to the phone system, some fixes, remove some bugs and some other issues, and it would also make available a smartphone app for our employees that do have a smartphone to manage their voicemails and other aspects of their office phone away from the office, making us more efficient and more mobile. The cost of this upgrade, which I've been asking from, for our vendor for about a year and a half and just finally got in the ballpark of about $6,600, give or take, depending upon how much time the labor actually takes to perform this upgrade. And we've discussed internally about how we can cover that cost. Should we do it this year, next year? Should we split it up over two years? And it was kind of decided internally, let's try to make it a go this year with all the different departments that use this phone system contributing to the cost of this upgrade. Any questions or?
So what we're looking for today is for the council to move forward with purchasing the software upgrade at an amount not to exceed $6,600?
I don't know if I would say that. That was kind of the average cost, it depends how long the labor takes. If it goes smooth, it might be less than that. If we run into issues, it may go a little longer and on the proposal...
Okay, we'll just open it up to you then. You spend whatever you want to, Josh.
How's $100,000 sound?
Would $7,000 be a safe number, Josh? That's an extra $400.
I think $7,000 would be good and I think the proposal, they probably overestimate it a little bit as well, you know. I don't, I'm hoping it doesn't take that long, but never know.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the vertical phone system upgrade at a price not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Shamble, second by Lockwood, that we approve of the upgrade to the vertical phone system software upgrade at an amount not to exceed $7,000. Any discussion? Gene, go ahead.
I'd like to include that once the departments tell me what line item they're giving their money over to technology, I'll be doing a budget revision, so that you're allowing me to move it to technology.
Takes the council action to move it from department...
Can we include that in the motion?
From one department to, from one department to the next.
Okay.
So that's why she's requesting it.
Okay. We can do that once it's not on here tonight, but yeah. But once we know, we can do that at our next meeting, is that okay? Gene?
We won't know until we get the bill, too.
Right.
Yeah, I mean...
So let's just wait until we get the bill.
Okay, when I have the bill, I can have it all worked out.
Yeah.
That'd be great. But we know that that's coming.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion?
When we did this, I remember that it was several thousand dollars a year just to maintain and upgrades as we went, so I think we actually probably got a good deal with this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, right. Any other discussion? Okay, Sandy will take the roll.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Porczatki?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next we have a ordinance number 1113-2013. That's an ordinance under the City of Opaquah Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parent 4, of the parking prohibited in certain specific places. This is the first, the first reading of this and here is the ordinance. Common Council, the City of Opaquah do ordain as follows, Section 1, Chapter 7.05, Parent 4, Parent C, Parent 3, Parent E. A is hereby created to read as foul to restrict parking along the north side of Badger Street between Franklin Street and Washington Street, all to two-hour parking limit. So right now it's unlimited?
The east portion of that block is two-hour limit, the west portion has no parking to the corner on a portion of the west portion. It's kind of a mixture. There's a alley driveway and then a parking lot driveway, and what we're recommending is allowing parking along the north side from Washington to Franklin in the areas that do not have driveways, which would be a standard parking allowance. So a portion is allowed currently and a portion is not allowed currently.
Everybody understand? All right. That's the first reading, so at next month's meeting, that will be up for a vote. Okay, we have a request from the First United Methodist Church. This is for a special use sign. Brennan?
Yes, the first, the church has a special use permit already to operate within R1 residential district. As part of that permit, any type of monument sign is required to have a special use permit for that property. They currently do have one monument sign that they are looking to eliminate and actually construct the new one that is within your packet. The Plan Commission last week did approve, recommend approval of the monument sign subject to the conditions you will see in your packet. I have started to change the executive summaries for the Plan Commission, there will be more of written form of the conditions, whether it's a site plan, whether it's a monument sign request. These type of items that do come forward to the City Council will have a similar feel as well. The only discussion that, the only changes in here that need to be identified is under 7A, the Plan Commission allowed up to 50% of the sign, monument sign to be electronic green board, and Item G was eliminated. Any questions? We don't have an electronic green board ordinance in place right now, so I worked with the Plan Commission to at least, we're looking to adopt some policies established by the Plan Commission that will start to follow. And as we go through the code rewrite for the zoning code, these policies will be then transferred into more of an ordinance form. They seemed to be well receptive at the meeting last week, so at this time, this is the direction that any future monument signs that have electronic green boards in it will have to follow.
Okay, and as Brennan said too, this is a residential area, although it's an unusual residential area because this sign would be directly across from the hospital. So I think the Plan Commission showed a little bit more of a leeway in allowing the larger sign there because of it really being a more of a commercial area with the hospital being there too. Okay, so at this time then, if we're okay with this, we would need a motion to approve the request for the special use for the, of this sign, special use of this sign.
I'll move that we approve the special use permit with the recommended conditions that he discussed.
Second.
A motion by Olson, second by Keeland, that we approve of the request for the special use sign with all of the items that were listed in your packet. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatki?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Deb Fenske?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Great. Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on then, Brennan, you have the Village Inn Certified Survey Map?
Yep, in front of you, you have a certified survey map for the Village Inn, they're looking to split off a lot two, which would be a future commercial property. The lot two does conform to the minimum standards for the B4 district. There are several conditions here, I did speak with the surveyor this afternoon and he has followed up on a couple of the actions that are in front of you this evening. All these conditions, a little bit different than what you've probably seen in the past, all the conditions do need to be met prior to the city clerk signing the certified survey map within sixty days of council approval. It does say state under Item 6 and 7, thirty days, that was revised to sixty days at the Plan Commission.
Okay, so you have a number of items that need to be taken care of before we would allow this to go through, but otherwise it was...
Correct, it was a, it was a straightforward CSM. There was this concern addressing the cross access, because the lot will be serviced by one shared driveway, we needed more of a clear depiction of the egress and ingress, what was gonna be shared. We were trying to protect both landowners at the same time. When Lot 2 was sold off, there's an existing garage on the property that will have to be torn down as well. And they are working on cross access or cross parking easement for both sides as well currently, so that will have to be depicted as well.
Okay. Any questions, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Village Inn Certified Survey Map, subject to the conditions, as no...
Second.
You have a motion by Shamble, second by Olson, to approve the Certified Survey Map for the Village Inn property. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next then we have an ordinance here for the rezoning of some property on Runway Drive. It's an ordinance number 10-13, 2013, and this is the first reading. Brennan, you wanna just...
Yep, I'll give a brief overview. This is in relation to, relationship to the site plan for Andy Schmidt for Schmidt boat lifts and docks. The property is currently zoned I1. Andy's long-term development plans included a Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the property, which would have been a detached building for maintenance and storage of equipment. And within the I1 district, it only allows for buildings to be a maximum fifteen feet. So the property was rezoned to B6 in order to allow for the future expansion plans to occur. It also provides some more flexibility with the signage that within the East Gateway and B6 zoning commercial, it does conform to the master plan as stated. This one is actually being rezoned by Mr. Alan Foot, who is the current owner of the property. Right now, there are actually three parcels out there. There will be a re-land division, I will say, of the parcels where Andy will be purchasing one and then half of another one. As of right now, I spoke with Alan Foot, Rhonda did last week, they are going to do more of a meet and bounce transfer so Andy can close on the property and then a formal CSM will be presented later on, which will be a more cleaner option to go, that will portray that land division. So the rezonings for all three parcels are currently out there.
Okay, and this is just the first reading, so we will vote on that at our first meeting in September, which is what, September 3rd? Okay. Alright, let's move on then to the special use permit. Brennan, again, explain why we're doing this.
The special use permit, again, within the B6 district, you're allowed to have retail uses, special use permits required for any retail use that's under ten thousand square feet. So again, the project is only a little bit over five thousand square feet right now, so the special use permit would be required. It is going over what will be the future lot area, not over the three parcels that Mr. Alan Foot owns right now. It's only gonna be for the parcel that Mr. Schmidt is actually purchasing from the current landowner.
So again, this is, the reason this is in front of you is that it is less than ten thousand square feet, so it does require a special use permit out in, this is only in...
Within the B6. Again, the B6 was created a couple of years ago for the East Gateway area for, again, is more of a retail destination type of establishment, special use was for anything under ten thousand square feet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the special use permit.
Second.
We have a motion by Shamble, second by Porczowski, that we approve the special use permit for the owner, which is the Landings LLC, Ellen E. Foot, for One Way Drive, Runway Drive. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Upstee.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
And Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Nine ayes, one upstee, motion carried.
Okay, thanks Brennan. Okay, under new business, we have a mayor's appointment to committee, Paul, you want to take that?
Sure, thanks Mayor. The mayor appoints Flo Young to replace Carol Dean Bergen on the Park and Recreation Board. This time I need a motion to approve this appointment.
So move?
Second.
Move by Olson, second by Shamble, that council approves of the mayor of, approves of the appointment, mayor's appointment of Flo Young to replace Carol Dean Bergen on the Park and Rec Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, motion carries.
Alright, you Mayor. Thank you, Paul. Okay, nothing under unfinished business or issues projects, communications, recommendations of the mayor, just remember, council members, once we adjourn, we are going to caucus tonight on the one union that we have left in our, in our community and we'll have a short caucus afterwards, discussion on negotiations for 2014 and beyond. So with that then, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn till our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we are adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thanks everybody for watching and attending.